We have a lot of people coming into this meeting, so I'm gonna move a couple people back into the waiting room. As far as people that I think are public speakers. Chad, are you with us?
Yes ma'am.
I don't see you or, I don't see you.
Unmuted. Did you say something that says unmuted?
There was, I see the applicant. Is Mr. Schwer here? Let me let him in, I see Jessica.
Excuse me, I'd like to see if anyone can hear me.
I can hear you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Schwer, are you here?
I, I am, well, I'm on mute.
Okay. Ms. Smith, are you? I don't see you here yet.
I have the wrong username. Let me.
I see Mayor Noas, I see Alderman Blackwell, I see Mr. Comer, I see Mr. Grimes, Mr. Sandlin. Mr. Sandlin, are you in attendance, sir?
Did you answer the question?
So I can't figure out how to change my username. So, there we go.
The last name is correct.
Yes.
Go to Participants and click on the button next to it and it'll say Change.
Here we go.
I changed it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, I was just gonna mention, when you are ready to start the meeting, if you will just kinda give a signal to Phillip Scoggins, I don't think he's, I don't think his video or voice is on, but he's handling the broadcast for us.
Okay. I think we can get ready to start, it's, it's four minutes after the time, so we'll get ready to start.
Mary, could I interrupt just a moment, please? Could I interrupt? I just had a call from Sandlin and said his link is not working.
Who was that, sir?
Greg Sandlin, a new commissioner. It indicates that the link was not working.
Mary, this is Jennifer, I'll take care of getting the link to Greg for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grimes?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait for Mr. Sandlin to log on, or do you want to proceed with the hearing?
What I will do is.
If he wanted to be on.
Yeah. I can go ahead and read some of our disclosures, we'll give it just a minute. And then.
Ms. Smith has joined us too, Mr. Grimes.
Okay.
Handicap difficulties, y'all. My iPad was bad, and so I'll have you guys on my phone.
Yeah, Mr. Sandlin, the link.
I've emailed it to him, I don't think I have his phone number to text him if somebody wants to.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Winston.
Are we ready for the recording to start?
I've already clipped the recording to start, I didn't anticipate this.
Thanks.
So, I will go ahead and let Phillip know, we'll go ahead and get started through this, and hopefully we can, Mr. Sandlin can get signed on once I read this.
This is, this is Greg Sandlin, and I'm calling in, I couldn't get into the Zoom, so I'm on.
Awesome, thank you Greg. All right, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission will conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather in a quorum of its members in a physical, physically present in the same location at the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 71, which remains in effect 11/59/2021. I will call this to order, and it has been determined that we will meet electronically as necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and a lot of the coronavirus. Recording this meeting will be made available to the public online. With that, I will determine a quorum. When I call your name, will you let me know that you're here? Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Mayor Noas.
Present.
Mr. Comer.
Here.
Mr. Schwer.
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Sandlin?
I'm here.
All right, we'd like to welcome you to the Board of the Planning Commission, is there any words that you'd like to say before we move forward?
Just glad to be with you all, and I look forward to working with you.
I think all seven of us are present, did I miss anybody?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, I've determined the quorum is set, I will handle, hand the meeting over to Mary for the election of officers.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes, Mary Semeniego, your Planning Department. The next item of the agenda, annually, you are required to make an election of officers, a chairman and a vice chairman, per your bylaws. The only members that are not eligible to be the chairman are the mayor appointee and the alderman representative. So if you want to begin nominations for the chairman position, which will be held for one year.
I nominate Chad Grimes for president.
Back end.
Okay, nominated by Mayor Noas, seconded by Alderman, Alderperson Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Need to do roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, sorry about that. Blackwell?
Yes.
Noas?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Comer? Schwer?
Yes.
And Sandlin?
Yes.
Okay. That passes with one extension. Do we want to make a motion, congratulations, Mr. Grimes, do we want to make a motion for the vice chair now?
I nominate Shelley Smith.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Greg Sandlin.
Roll call, Grimes? Would take a vote on that for Shelley Smith being vice chair, Mr. Grimes?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Noas? Schwer?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Comer?
Yes.
And Sandlin?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Smith, you are now the vice chair for one year. That concludes that portion of the agenda. Since you are still the chair, Mr. Grimes, do you want to proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone will stand, and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll start us out. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America.
To the republic which stands.
Which stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. First order of business, you have the minutes of our previous meeting in front of you. Once y'all that have had a chance to review those, I will.
Please say approve.
Check up.
Roll call vote, and we will go. Mayor Noas? Mr. Comer?
Yes.
I cannot hear.
I, I think Mr. Sandlin needs to put his phone on mute, because I think that's what's picking up, is the two incoming over.
I asked Mayor Noas, he, the Ms., excuse me, Alderman Blackwell made the motion, Mayor Noas seconded, I've asked Mr. Mayor Noas, he's approved, Mr. Comer approved, Mr. Schwer?
Yes, approved.
Read.
Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin, I think you might be back on mute.
I can't hear him.
That's the same as here, I see him lit up. So, we will say the motion passes. We'll go on to the next. All right, we have done the minutes, now reports from officer and staff, Ms. Sammy Mango.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. So, update on the Conference of Plan 2040, requests for proposals, staff sent those, released their request for proposals on January 4th, 2021. We have given the potential candidates until February 5th to submit their requests for proposals, and we anticipate making a recommendation through our selection committee, and taking that recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen by February 22nd, and then shortly thereafter, beginning the Conference of Plan update process. So I just wanted to make the Planning Commission of where, kind of where we are in that process, and I will give them the updates of that effect during this entire Conference of Plan Do you have any questions regarding this process that we're just beginning?
What, what is our involvement in that approval process at the board?
As far as the candidates, or as far as the overall Conference of Plan?
As far as candidates, I guess.
There has been a selection committee created, and that committee will go through each proposal and, and grade it on a numerical rating system that has been established, and then the leader of that grading system will be the selected candidate, again, that will may take before the Board of Mayor and Aldermen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Grimes, I hand the agenda back to you.
Like, we do not have any.
I've just received a text message from Mr. Mr. Sandlin indicating that he is locked out.
Okay. Locked out.
He is locked out.
That was his text message.
I don't see him in the waiting room, I'm not really sure what that means, I'll, I'll try to follow up with him.
I have him listed here.
By phone, can you, can you confirm that he can hear us still?
Um.
Rick, can you?
Can you hear us? I see you present.
I'll try to reach out to him and get back.
Says the meeting is locked, he cannot call in or zoom in.
Have him try again, I just.
He's trying again, I just tried to let him back in. Mr. Sandlin, can you hear us? I see that he should be attending by phone, he's not in the waiting room. I'm gonna start moving people, there he is, there's Mr. Sandlin, I see him. We cannot hear you, sir.
And for those that are on the phone, I believe it's star six to mute yourself, and star six to unmute yourself.
That's right. All right, glad to have you back, Mr. Sandlin. All right, we will move on to old business, there is none at this time, so we will go to new business. We have a zoning map appeal, which is a public hearing, we have a, no, we don't have anything there, excuse me. We have subdivision, subdivision plat, sorry. The first one is Christian Life Church Strides, but that has, applicant has requested a continuance, so that we will move on. Our next order of business will be, it's a public hearing as well, subdivision plat. Howard, Ovoca, Raleigh, Mater subdivision, final plat. But this is a public hearing, so, public hearing, you are granted two minutes, you need to state your name and your address. I would ask that if you're donating your time to one individual, that you let me know upfront, and so we do not have to, because of this medium we're using, we're not have to continually have to stop, so if somebody's trying to make a point, we will let that go. So, first of all, I need to know if anybody is donating their time to an individual.
I'm Joyce Hebert, I live at 2105 Ovoca Road, I'm donating my time to Brian Hayes.
I'm Marina Keane, I live at 2108 Ovoca Road, I'm donating my time to Brian Hayes, and also Charlotte Oliver at 2108 Ovoca Road, donating our time to Brian Hayes.
This is Derek Dox at 2102 Ovoca Road, and I'm also donating my time to Brian Hayes.
This is Kristy Hayes at 2106 Ovoca Road, donating time to Brian Hayes.
Anyone else?
This is Adam Moon at 2100 Ovoca Road, I'm also going to donate my two minutes to Brian Hayes.
This is Deborah Clark of 448 Parkway Road, if needed, I'm donating my two minutes to Michael LaMoss.
This is Buddy Bowler at 201 Fairways Boulevard North, donating our time to Brian
Nina, are you giving 14 minutes donated to Mr. Hayes?
I'm getting 12 minutes donated to Mr. Hayes plus the two that he gets.
Yeah, that's what I got.
What's, 12 minutes plus his is 14, right? He gets 14 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. LaMoss has two with his two, so that would give him four.
Correct.
All right then, Mr. Hayes, since you are allotted 14 minutes, are you ready to speak?
Yes, Mr. Grimes, I'm ready.
We'll let you state your name and your address, and you have 14 minutes.
Okay, my name's Brian Hayes, I live at 2106 Ovoca Road, pretty much directly across from the property under proposed development. I kinda, I gave a pretty decent presentation back in August over the traffic concerns and the stormwater drainage concerns that we've had, and I've been talking with the city for probably close to 10 years now, with Wayne Lindbaugh, and now Butch Jones, or Butch Taylor, excuse me, and also Scott St. John, the city engineer. And the, you know, the two main concerns with this development are traffic, traffic safety concerns and the additional stormwater drainage. And the biggest concern I have is the plat and the erosion control plan does not address any of these stormwater drainage issues. Basically, what we're seeing is what we've seen with Emerald Meadows and with the Flint Rock subdivision, more removal of trees, more addition of hard surfaces will runoff, and just more cumulative stormwater coming down into the collector point, which is the culvert directly across from my property that enters into my front ditch, and then basically flows through the entire fairway subdivision, back to the retention pond back in Kings Ridge, the Kings Ridge Lake, I believe is the name of that retention pond, back at, near the golf course. So, I'm just really concerned about how we put the four lots on there, a lot of sidewalks, driveways, the roof, all that is going to add additional stormwater drainage to that, to the, already the additional stormwater we have from Emerald Meadows, Flint Rock, and the farm across from Raleigh Creek. And all that was addressed in my previous presentation, and the commission members have seen that, I've emailed that to Greg, so he, he wasn't around for the August, but he, he has received that and reviewed that presentation. And so, I'm just concerned that when I look through the reviews, and maybe this is not part of the process, but Public Works and Scott St. John, in the review process, they not bring up any concerns of why are we not addressing stormwater drainage in this new development? Also, I have some concerns with the erosion control plan drawings, it's like there's some errors that need to be revised in those drawings. One thing is, in the Emerald Meadows plat and erosion control plan drawings that were approved previously for this area of land, in that stream buffer area, there was actually a 14 or 15 inch culvert that attached to a catch basin in Emerald Meadows and collect the water on that, the houses that are bordering Carroll Creek and a little bit behind there on Ovoca Road, and that water funnels into the Carroll Creek stream there, and that is not shown on the erosion control plan drawing. Don't know if that's a big deal, but I, I think to be accurate, that needs to be included. Also, I'm just wondering, you know, we had approved drawings in Emerald Meadows, and maybe this supersedes it, but for, for some reason, they had a 110 foot buffer, basically around that stream, and I, I don't, maybe rules have changed or something, but now we have a 30 foot, and so I'm kinda concerned about that. Also, on that ECP drawing, Lot 1 shows as .93 acres, and I'm just wondering if that's because Lot 1 includes the stream, the, the stream buffer. And it also states about maintenance of that stream buffer, and I'm concerned about what this maintenance mean. I know the HOA, well, Emerald Meadows does not have an HOA, so Mr. Howard is responsible for maintaining the retention pond and some drainage issues over there in Emerald Meadows, I know Emerald Meadows have some outstanding issues with Mr. Howard, and I've been involved with talking with Emerald Meadows, my neighbors, and discussing their drainage issues, and their, you know, issue of not maintaining a correct drainage infrastructure. So, that, that's another question I have. And then also, on the ECP drawing, the most, the critical juncture, the critical. Culvert that runs on Ovoca Road. And there, it's just a bunch of junk, because there's a lot of contour lines, there's a lot of symbols and everything, so like, I'm an engineer, when I do a drawing and I have an area that's very covered up with a lot of different symbols, that's usually marked out as a detail, and you have a zoomed out portion, and I think that should be added to that, because that's a very critical juncture there, because that's where the collector of all that water feeds into, it, it calls out maybe for possible riprap, or maybe it's just the riprap, what little riprap is there. Just want to make sure that we have the right detail in that drawing. And, you know, with the, with the traffic, traffic is horrendous right now on Ovoca Road. Raleigh Creek has always been really bad, but Ovoca Road is getting worse every day. We have speeders starting up, probably around Grace Baptist, you can hear them when we're outside, they put the gas down to the, you know, down pedal to the metal, and it's, it's a very dangerous intersection. They put the gas down to the, you know, down pedal to the metal, and it's, it's a very dangerous intersection there. I would say probably 50% of what I've seen when I'm out there is, is maybe teenagers, young adults, but there's, but there are some older adults that, that are speeding through here. And it's just, I know in the, in the, in the subdivision plat and the drawings and all that, it says to have turnarounds and all that. And I know Flint Rock added those, but some of those people, when I look over there, especially some of the people that's moved like from Nashville or something, they still back out of their driveway. And it's very dangerous to back out of your driveway onto Ovoca and, and Raleigh Creek. There's just some blind heels, blind spots, and then coming off that Y intersection, it's, it's always very dangerous. And we're still having incidents where they're not reported accidents, but people are taking to Raleigh Creek and going into Mr. and Ms. Tant's front yard. You can, it's kind of a running game with us because we, we look for the, the marks in the yard almost every morning going to work. And we'll see two or three new marks on a weekly, weekly basis. Those are unreported accidents because people just spin out and get out of the, out of the yard and off, back onto Ovoca and back into town. So, all that, all that said, you know, I just want to voice my concern about, you know, when we develop a property like this that's in unusual shape and it has so much collection of stormwater from the Raleigh Creek Farm, from Emerald Meadows and from Flint Rock, and now this one. It seems like the engineering design is, is lacking. And what that's going to do is compound a problem. I'm going to put it on, on myself because I'm going to collect the water. As Keane and some of the other fairways residents that live along Carroll Creek that go through fairways are going to be the recipient of a lot more water and, and more headaches for us that we shouldn't have to deal with if the city and developers and take stormwater drainage serious. That's a, it's, it's a serious issue. And it can hinder, hinder growth in, in a community. Because you start making, you can build, 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 and then you can start destroying other properties around you if you don't maintain proper stormwater drains. So I, that's all I want to say, and I would hope for the minimum out of this meeting, I would like for the, the members to defer to give time, more time to review since we had a holiday yesterday. It was kind of hard to get a hold of everybody and kind of discuss this issue and try to address these drainage issues and the traffic concerns in a little bit more detail before rushing the judgment and approving the design of the subdivision as is. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes, point of order. I think staff needs to give their presentation first.
Okay, all right.
If that's okay.
That's perfectly fine. I will let you, I will yield to you to give your presentation.
Right, it'll be brief. I'm, it, it, all the information that I'm providing is in the staff report, but I just need to present the case for the public and for the record. The applicant is proposing a minor subdivision to create four new lots for a single-family development use in the R1 zoning district on approximately 2.03 acres. The R1 zoning district requires each lot to be at least 12,000 square feet and have 75 feet of road frontage. All four of the proposed lots meet that minimum standard and exceed it. The property is not located in a FEMA regulated, regulated special flood hazard area. However, Carroll Creek does traverse the northern portion of the property. A common area parcel of approximately .67 acres has been created that includes Carroll Creek and the required steam buffer, stream buffer and drainage easement of 30 feet from stream centerline per the stormwater ordinance. The homeowners association, association will be responsible for maintenance of said common area. The southernmost .20 acres of the site is proposed to be dedicated to the city for free simple ownership. This anticipated that the city will retain ownership of this property for a potential Ovoca Road, Riley Creek Road intersection improvement project, which is as now undetermined. The dedication of the land requires approval by the board of mayor and alderman. A continued sidewalk will be installed along the northern property line, along Ovoca Road, along the entire property through the southernmost portion that'd be dedicated to the city, and then back up to the northern section of the subdivision on Riley Creek Road. Due to the four driveways accessing collector roads, of which Ovoca and Riley Creek are both collector roads, the following note has been added to the site plan. No residential driveway or parking area shall be arranged so, so that vehicles shall be required to back directly into the public right of way. And the minimum of 10 foot width by 15 foot deep turnaround shall be required for each driveway. This is in a comprehensive plan land use category that encourages low-density residential development. Per the transportation plan, both roads are classified as urban collectors and have a level of service for Ovoca Road of a level of service A. A traffic study was performed in 2019 for this intersection. Based on that traffic analysis on the intersection, which the city of Tullahoma did pay for and provide, three alternatives were presented for roadway improvements at that intersection. How is deemed that this project would not warrant enough trips at that intersection to degrade the level of service beyond what it currently is. Saying that there are some minor changes from city engineering regarding the construction plans for the sidewalk, which the member of the public did bring up earlier, to be submitted at the revised plan upon when and if this is approved. And there's two minor notes from the planning department that need to be revised on the, the submitted site plan. So the preliminary staff recommendation is to choose alternate number one to approve the final plat subject to staff comments for the following reasons, that the lots and the proposed subdivision meet all the minimum lot standards required by the zoning ordinance, the minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and minimum lot setbacks, and the subdivision meets all the subdivision regulations. That concludes my presentation, sir. Do you have any questions for me at this time before you proceed with the public hearing?
Any questions from the planning commission?
Yes, this is Bill Comer. I'm a little bit confused about the homeowners association. Does this come under an existing homeowners association? But some of that remaining property back behind it?
No, sir, this is going to, this is a completely new subdivision, so this will be a newly established homeowners association of the four potential new buyers.
And that is going to be established?
Yes, sir. If it's not established, it would defer to the responsibility of the developer, but it says on the plat that a homeowners association will be established. Any other questions?
The traffic plan that, that you, that you referenced earlier, do you know when that was done, any counts?
Yes, that was done. The actual traffic counts, I just had it, were performed, I think on March 21st, 2019. Yes, Thursday, March 21st, 2019. Is one day of track, accounts for AM and PM peak hours.
Am I coming through audio?
Yes, sir.
Oh, excellent. And sorry about that mix up. Normally I click on Zoom and I Friday and has there been? I'm sorry?
Your video is frozen, but I can still hear you. Mr. Sandler, you can proceed. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I kind of had a glitch there. Sorry about that. Is there an assessment of pre and post-development of these new four lots and increase in stormwater flow?
That would be something that the city engineer would have looked at, and they would be required to meet the minimum standards of the stormwater ordinance for the four lots.
And that's been performed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, I will go back to the public hearing. Sorry about that.
I'm available for questions if you continue to have some.
We had a Mr. Lamis, Michael Lamis, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Michael Lamis.
You have four minutes, Mr. Lamis.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm a very concerned citizen. I use Riley Creek and Ovoca constantly for daily traffic going to Tullahoma. And I have neighbors that has been in accidents. I've had friends that's run off the road there. And also, the road is used very highly for Jacobs and George Dickle big trucks. I drive a duly, and I've almost been run off the road, and I've had half of my vehicle off the road because there's no shoulder. It's a drop off. As well as I have friends that do RVs on that road, and when you meet a big truck, a dump truck, an 18 wheeler, you don't have any room, and you're forced to go on the shoulder, which there is no shoulder at all, except for a nice drop off. And then if you were on a vocal road coming to Riley Creek to make that right, it's a hard turn. You're forced to go in the opposite lane. And with houses being built there, you're going to have a bad blind spot. You're going to have more accidents. And as it was mentioned earlier, the speed is only 30 miles an hour. But I've been a motorcycle safety instructor, and I know how to clock speed by giving distance. 44 feet is 30 miles an hour. And I have clocked people doing 45 and 50 miles an hour down that road on Ovoca as well as Riley Creek. It's a hazard. And here, we're trying to make it safe to prevent it, but then we're allowing houses. Look at the houses. There is no easement with these houses. How are they going to pull onto the road from their driveway? It's not going to happen. It needs a shoulder. It needs a stop sign down at that corner. A stop sign will slow traffic down both ways. That is a simple fix. A shoulder that was unacceptable due to the planning of putting those houses so close to Riley Creek. There is no room for a shoulder, at least a two-foot shoulder would be my recommendation. I know it's a little late in this development because houses are already being built, but we need to take action now for the safety of Tullahoma residents.
Thank you, Mr. Lamis.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing.
Sir, Mr. Grimes?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. I will note that I did receive, staff did receive several email comments from residents. And Amanda Thompson, William Bates, and Mr. Lamis, which he formally just spoke, a Christian Holmes, a Dennis Horn, and a Melinda Kent. So I did receive written comments, and they are in the file. Would you like me to read those or just acknowledge that they're in the record?
Let's go ahead and if we can, just give an overall from them as well, so we can hear from them.
The general concerns were drainage and potential flooding in the immediate area, traffic concerns with the intersection of Ovoca Road and Riley Creek Road, the size of the lots, seemingly small lots for the area. I think those were the big ones. Oh, and the, the validity of the traffic study that was concluded back in 2019.
It was, there was a homeowners association from fairways later to be entered into the record as well.
The ones that you forwarded me, sir?
No, I thought you sent it to me. Maybe not. Sorry. I received an email, and I thought it came from you, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. All emails that I've received regarding this case are part of, are public record and are part of the case.
Okay. It was sent to Jennifer.
Oh, I see. So yes, generally, that was the main thing is, is stormwater drainage, potential flooding, traffic concerns, and then the minimum lot size.
Very much. Anyone else, public hearing, for your two minutes?
Jen, did, did you receive that, the letter from fairways?
I received that letter. Yeah, I received it from John Miller, the HLA manager or director there.
I did? Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe I've received any formal letter from a, a proper homeowners association on this, this case. I've only received letters from individual property owners.
Okay, I will forward you that information, Mary, for the record.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Shor.
The others?
It's the same concerns that, that you just spoke of. Carroll Creek flooding, road intersection, and the size of the lots. There, there, there's concern with the, the minimum square footage in the shape of those lots on the, for lots three and four, I believe.
Yes, sir, Mr. Howard, take your comment.
Okay, this has been an ongoing piece of property that I've had for a while now. And of course, I came before the board last August, I think, and asked for a commercial site there, which I wanted a nice little coffee shop or something, and everybody didn't seem to want, no one seemed to want it. So I've got to do something with the property. It is for sale, or we can, or I want to develop homes on it. And I would like to specifically address Mr. Hayes. You know, I've, I've studied his property, his home where he lives. And at one time, there was the ditch, the drainage ditch went right through by his house, and he moved the ditch over. He built in a lot that was in a flood area before we ever, before anybody else ever built there. So I, I know he's a civil engineer, but he can't, I mean, all that water's been coming down that ditch for a long time, and then he moved the ditch. So I'm opposed to changing anything other than putting the sidewalks in and size culvert that's already there. I mean, we can, we'll work with you or do whatever we need to do. Take recommendations from Scott St. John, and if he's online, I'd like for him to comment because we didn't get these changes of the, until Friday that he wanted. And apparently my surveyor did not get it on the plat the way he wanted there. So we would like for Mr. Scott St. John to comment. And, but I just don't feel like it's my responsibility for the drainage of that whole neighborhood, which was put in by a, a developer at one point or the other. And whether the developer got the, all the lots out of the drainage areas, I, I don't know. But apparently he did not with as many people that oppose this. So why should I be punished because your developer, or you, Mr. Hayes, as a civil engineer, did not address your own problems? Thank you.
Can I address?
Grimes?
Wait, 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 let me, I'm going to get this back into control here. Yes, ma'am. Mary, yes?
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to say for the record, unfortunately, Mr. St. John is unable to attend tonight's meeting. He had a family medical emergency.
I'm going to go ahead and, Mr. Hayes, I understand, and let's go ahead and get this. Is there anybody who has not spoke that would like to speak? All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and we're going to move. I will entertain a motion from our commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Bill Comer. I think that by, by making a decision on it at this point in time that we're putting the cart before the horse. We have a serious problem with We have a serious problem with traffic at that location. If we do this subdivision, then we're limiting the options that we might have to improve that. And I think that we should delay decision on this until we can get a plan put in place for correcting that property. Now, I personally think that we owe it to Mr. Howard to make a decision on that, what we're going to do about that property and go ahead and do it and improve it. Once that is improved, approved, and we have a plan in place, even though it may not be completed at the time, if we have a funded plan in place, I would be agreeable to go ahead and approve this. But I just can't bring myself to approve it at this time without, to vote to approve it without that. So I'm making a motion that we delay this decision until a plan is in place to correct that in a traffic problem at that intersection.
I'm sorry, we have a motion to discuss yet? I'm confused.
That's what, he just made a motion to postpone this particular plant. So if we postpone it, we can have discussion and then we will vote. But that is the motion on the floor. He has made a motion to postpone the plant on hand. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interject. Just so you're aware, per the subdivision control ordinance, as far as action by the planning commission, it refers to Tennessee statute. And per Tennessee statute, section TCA 13.4.304, the planning commission has 60 days to act upon a subdivision once it's had its initial hearing. So the statute says that today's the initial hearing. You can continue it out for 60 days. If that 60 days pass, only with the acceptance of the applicant can it be extended. If not, then if the 60 days pass and there's not another hearing, the subdivision is automatically approved. So I wanted you to be aware of that as far as the sensitivity and the timing of this application. Thank you.
I have a second to Mr. Comer's motion.
Do we have to have a second so we can discuss, correct? So I will second it so we can discuss.
We have a motion to postpone and we have a second and it now has opened up the floor for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
One of the concerns I had was traffic as well. And the reason why I asked Ms. Saminiego what the date was for the traffic study, and I know that we talked about the traffic study before, but it's been brought to my attention. It was the first day of spring break that the traffic study was done. So I wonder about what, and I went, just went through my calendar to verify. It was the very first day of spring break and I'm wondering if that caused the traffic study to be slightly skewed. Is that something Ms. Saminiego you could speak to? I mean, at this point, or maybe Ms. Moody?
I can speak to it and Ms. Moody can certainly add to that. I wasn't here in attendance, but it's been my professional experience. Number one, I did verify, I did look through the Toluoma school calendar back then, and it was in fact the first day of spring break. And typically, traffic studies are not completed during holidays or it, or periods of time within the, the community of known anomalies of traffic patterns, special events, that kind of thing. So typically, they're not done in those instances.
I wonder though, if it wasn't realized, you know, because I feel like this might be an anomaly. Because I mean, I know that the first day school's out that we don't leave the house. So unless we're on vacation, then we're gone, right? So.
I mean, perhaps. It was, it was a Thursday. I mean, it could be coincidence. I can't speak to that. But I can say in my professional experience that typically, traffic studies are done during the week during normal traffic patterns.
Are we in discussion, are we in discussion phase right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. I just, I agree with the motion and the second to postpone. I'd like to get more of a look at this and I'd really like to get to talk to Scott St. John and the stormwater issues. And seeing Mr. Hayes' presentation, some of the photographs of stormwater flowing over Avoca, the risk of hydroplaning for a young driver, for any driver for that matter. I'd like to really get a handle on the stormwater pre-post development assessment. So I'd certainly want to, I certainly support the delay for, for one month, whatever we can do per statute.
Mary said, you know, we just, this is their initial one. We have 60 days to make a ruling on this or it automatically.
That's plenty of time.
Unless the applicant agrees to a further extension.
And to caddy off of what Mr. Sandlin just said, I'd also like to have, if we can, take a look at that, another look at that traffic study and, and just make sure that, you know, I don't know how we can do that, to see if it would be, if it was slightly skewed because of the day. But I think that I have the same concerns as him and I'm looking, I'm glad that we can postpone it. Do we have any concerns with meeting that 60 day timeline? Or with, I know that Mr. Comer had said bringing up a plan for the, that point part first. Is there a concern about hitting the 60 day timeline if he wants to have a plan come through for that?
Is that a question directed to me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I mean, I guess the question is what exactly is a plan? Like a full engineering plan, kind of a general idea, to what extent and what assurance do you want within 60 days? Documented funding? I mean, in new traffics, I can't hear you, Mr. Comer. You're on mute. There you go.
Okay, about three years ago, it seems like, I might be wrong about the time, but a study was performed and about three alternatives were put forward. And far as I know, no action was ever taken on that, that particular study. The one that I thought was a good plan and was probably not really too expensive was to just simply turn that road and bring it in at, at 90 degrees there rather than the odd angle we've got now. And then put a stop sign there. And that way, if you come in with a road at 90 degrees, then you can look both ways. Now, if you, if you go on further down there to on Washington Street, where Avoca Road comes into Washington Street, you've, you've got exactly that situation where the road turns, it's coming in at an angle, but instead it turns and comes in at 90 degrees. And you can, it's a four way stop there. That happens to be four ways rather than three. And it, it's, in my judgment, it's not the problem that we've got here. Anytime you've got a road coming in at an angle like this, you've got a very difficult time trying to look back and see whether traffic is coming or not when you're trying to merge into that highway. Even if you have a stop sign, you've still got that visibility problem. As I mentioned in our, in our meeting before last, we've got exactly that same problem out on the old Manchester Highway at Rutledge Falls Road intersection. And those types of intersections are just dangerous by nature. And I just think that the city should commit to a solution to that problem. And if you don't, if you go ahead and develop this property prior to making that decision on what that solution's going to be, then you box yourself into a corner. You may not be able, if you build four houses on there, you may not be able to implement the decision that you want to. As I said before, we've drugged this thing on for so long. We owe a decision to Mr. Howard so he knows what he can do with his property.
Right, sir. I see you, Ms. Moody. That, the report that you're talking, you said three years ago, that was the one that we're speaking of that was done in 2019. So full traffic study and analysis was done. It did include three, three possible solutions of near term, a long term, and a roundabout. So the study's been done, so now the position would be for the city or the applicant to choose one of those options. Or alternatively, to complete a, start over and do another traffic study.
I think the roundabout would be an excellent solution, but that's an expensive solution.
Yes, sir, that, that solution, the estimate for that is approximately $600,000. Ms. Moody, I defer to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that it was last fiscal year when that study was conducted. And then in this current budget year, the board has allocated funding just recently to support the near term improvements. I want to say they're about $125,000 was the estimate. And we have not yet completed that project. But as I said, we, I believe with some of the funds that came available through the governor's support grants this year, we are funding those improvements. And they are primarily traffic safety improvements. I also wanted to mention, and this is not to disagree at all with the comments that it would have been better to perform the traffic study, not during a break. I agree with that fully. But I did want to say that the, my memory of the engineer's presentation and that report is that when he was forecasting traffic demand, not just for current traffic levels, but he was forecasting at full development as if every piece of land was developed to its full potential under its zoning. And then he additionally added a factor on top of that. And I don't remember what that factor was, but I'm almost certain that if we invited that engineer back that he would be able to explain why there is room for error that's accounted for in his calculations and that most likely it would not have changed the level of service of the road. But we can certainly ask that question and maybe in this, with this postponement, we could have the city engineer and also that engineer from Gresham Smith back to answer these questions.
Well, I don't believe that that traffic study is, is the most important driver to this solution. The, there's, there's another factor there that I saw in the report that was sent out for this meeting. And I can't remember off the top of my head exactly what it was, but it was related to the number of accidents there rate relative to some standard or some average. And it showed that those accidents were higher than, than is acceptable. It's the way I interpreted. And, you know, regardless of whether the traffic is a problem or not, the accidents are a problem.
Yes, what you're remembering is while it wasn't the quantity of accidents, it was the severity of those accidents that was concerning. And then we also feel, just like some of the residents that have spoken tonight have mentioned, there are probably a number of accidents that are running off the road and not involving another vehicle, and so they may not be reported. So what we can never account for is the, the number of accidents that are not being reported. But we do think speeding and some improvement to the design at that intersection are contributing factors to those accidents.
Well, my point is, is that I would, I would like to at least do enough of a study of that particular segment of that property that Mr. Howard is designated to donate to the city for a solution, if that is adequate to implement the solutions that we may implement.
Yes, we did. Scott St. John worked on a design and looked at the amount of right of way that we would need to tee, you know, we kept saying tee up that stop sign intersection. And so he has given us the right of way that we would need to possibly widen Avoca Road and then also have enough to bring that stop sign, that intersection forward.
So Mr. St. John's then agrees that this particular piece of property that Mr. Howard is donating to the city is adequate?
For the, yes, for the traffic improvements.
So, so for the, for the deferment, you know, I hate to, unfair to, to hold a developer accountable for past mistakes from the city or whatever you want to call them in this drainage. I, I do, I do think some clarity from Mr. St. John on the, on the drainage involving that ditch across Mr. Hayes' lot would be, would be good based on the developer's comments. And, and I, because I believe that that ditch was probably installed for Fairways drainage back in the late 80s. So if, if, if Mr. St. John can maybe speak on that for the, during this, the next 60 days. And also, I would, I mean, I, as well as I think Ms. Blackwell and Mr. Sandlin would like to see a copy of the stormwater analysis, both pre and post for this development. I had similar concerns about the traffic study happening on spring break. And my, I guess my last question is, is that this is dividing the lot into six, six pieces. Does that, does that kind of, does that qualify this as a major subdivision revision versus a minor?
Mary Saminiego, now this is still the minor subdivision. They're creating four developable lots. The creation of a lot to sell off to the city as well as common areas isn't typically.
Not counted, okay. I wasn't sure how that was counted.
I see where you're going, but no.
Okay, I was, I was on the fence there, but I figured I would get some clarity from you. But in general, like, you know, the, the residents of this area come beating my door down when, when, when anything comes up here, it seems. And, 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 and I understand their concerns and I'm familiar with the area. And, and I definitely think that, that, you know, something major needs to be done before development can happen at this lot. And I'll just leave it at that. That's my comments. I think Shelley wants to talk.
Okay, so I've just been taking some notes, so I may bounce around a little bit. But at first, I wanted to commend the Board of Mayor and Alderman for taking the steps to place a fund, the capital improvements budget for the improving the infrastructure at that intersection. I think that's a step in the right direction. I'm happy that we've had this discussion tonight. And this is the type of discussion that I think needs to happen for us to start moving forward and with our comprehensive planning process. And I guess while I'm on that note, I appreciate all the citizens coming out and voicing their concerns. It's great to see so many people exercising that right. I would encourage all, all of you, everyone that spoke tonight to take part in the comprehensive planning process. There's always a very large community engagement portion of that process that's very, very important because it's not, you don't know what developments are coming down the pipeline, so I'm not placing the blame on you. But if you care about your community, I urge everybody to come out and participate in those, in that whole process because then you don't have to wait until you have, you know, only 60 days to do something about it. And you can be a voice for your community and help shape this community the way that we would all like to see it shaped. And then I guess I'd like to, I, I'm not going to say whether I, I personally like or dislike this development, but the problem to me is really what everybody has been saying all night is that they're not, like our, our one requirements, they're don't like, this is a low density development and it ticks all the boxes. So to me, the, really what we're saying is that we're, we're actually don't like ourselves what we have in place. And so I just want to remind everybody that when the comprehensive plan is complete, that comprehensive plan itself has no teeth. It is not enforceable. But you do that so that you have a vision of where you want to go and then you update your zoning ordinances to sort of enforce these vision. So that, and I'm just. So that, and I just want to stress the importance of that process and encourage participation. Um, but that being said, this developer, whether, you know, for, he meets all the requirements and there's not really much that we can do about it at this time. Um, I, what we can do, and what I think we have done tonight, is have a, a good discussion about what we would like to see and our issue, the concerns of the citizens and the issues that we all may have with this development. And while I agree with very many of those, what we can do is we can recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to, um, to continue to place funds in that budget, to continue to allocate, to continue to place ordinance. Uh, that's our job as planning commissioners, as we make recommendations to the Board of Main Aldermen to make these decisions on the citizens' behalf. We have to let them know, we're the ones listening to the citizens when they tell us what they need. And it's our job to convey that to the Board of Main Aldermen. So at this time, it was sixty days, this developer meets all the requirements. And I don't know that there's much that we can do about it. You can delay it if you want. My fear is, and I, is that we may be adding to our Telomar's reputation, not the easiest place to do business. And we may buy sixty days, but you could get a traffic study done and it's a traffic study at the end of the day. Unless you think that we can get our zoning ordinance within our subdivision regs changed to sixty days, which I, I don't think we can. I'm not sure, I feel like we'll just be delaying this project for no reason and the only result will be that we'll, we might look bad. Um, in retrospect, uh, though this discussion has been going on for quite some time and quite a while before I was on this commission, uh, we've, I have sat in on many conversations about this intersection and maybe we should have recommended that we place some sort of zoning overlay or looked at different options. And I guess one thing we can do tonight is we could make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen that if you choose to delay it for sixty days, we could recommend the city makes a counter offer or make approaches a developer to make an offer. But other than that, I believe he has his buyer rights, so, um, I guess, I hope, I think I hit on my, on my notes and I'm sorry if I ruffled feathers or stepped on toes, but, um.
I'd like to make a comment there. Um, I, I, I understand that, you know, this, this development meets the zoning ordinance. And I think we, we might have found some holes in our zoning, zoning ordinance.
Subdivision, I missed, yeah. The subdivision regs, so sorry.
Yeah, well, and I, I, I feel, but I, I feel, and I'm, I'm, I served on the planning commission for three years, but it's been ten years ago. Uh, I feel like we have a wider, uh, purview to look out for safety, maybe a big higher view. And, uh, this is an unsafe intersection. Uh, I drove it this morning and I drove it again on the way home from Kroger's tonight to get a look at it. And people were driving too fast, it's, it's a tough turn. Uh, and I, we clearly need to turn that Y intersection into a T. Uh, and we need to use some of that land, uh, that in this little triangle. So I, I don't know what that looks like exactly. That's why we need to have Scott St. John on the, on, in a discussion. But, uh, we need to make it safer. Uh, the, I've studied a lot of risk, risk assessment. The severity, probability, both high here. Uh, it's a high, medium-risk intersection. And I, I'm sure that Mr. Howard would be amenable to selling, uh, some of this land. He's, he, he wants to, you know, get a return on his, his investment and I totally understand that. But we, we need, we need thirty, sixty days to, to, I think, look at it a little closer. And that's, that's the ordinance. And I, I know we can have an answer for him and for the city within that timeframe. Thank you, Mr. Sandlin.
So, so, uh, Mr. Grimes, Chet, uh, Shelley, Shelley Smith raised a good point. If this, when we vote to defer, if the deferment fails, where do we go from there?
We vote to defer, then, um, that would fail and then I would entertain another motion. It would, um.
Okay.
Approve or deny. Um, all right. I think there's a lot of questions that Mr. St. John is needed for on this one. Unfortunately, he had some family matters come up. So, um, let's just go ahead and we will put this to a vote. Uh, I will call the question and, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. So, um, with that being said, um, Mr. Schwer.
No.
Let me rephrase that. So you do not want to delay the vote. Right now, the, as it stands, we do not delay the vote.
Um, I'm just gonna say no. Yes.
Mr. Knowles?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Comer?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Blackwell?
Did you hear me? I said yes. Sorry, there's Elmo.
Mr. Sandlin? Yes. Yes. And I will vote yes as well, so that is six to two. This will, we will delay this and I guess we will look at it again. Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. So with that motion, you're delaying it to a date certain meeting?
I would say to our next meeting and with Mr. St. John being available to answer these questions, I think, um, there was definitely a question about the water, um, the erosions, those kind of things. And possibly making sure that the point two acres is enough to make sure that we can meet the requirements that the city has planned to try to tee up that intersection.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the record because it is a public hearing, so the next public hearing would be on, um, at four thirty PM and February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I think that's, yes, ma'am. Does anybody, yes, ma'am.
I just, I'm not sure. I mean, if, if we're deferring because we want to speak with St. John and discuss if the city could possibly make a counter offer or make an offer to the developer to put some sort of, uh, traffic calming measure or roundabout or, or whatever, you know, would be appropriate in that's location. I, you're deferring to, for thirty days for us to talk about it again in a public hearing, is that, wouldn't that not warrant a study session? Because we'd have to recommend to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to make it on that and then they'd have to get back to the developer and the developer had to get back to them. I, I don't know that thirty, that would be enough time to do all that.
Um, okay. Um, I think.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You know, and that this is just a subdivision, does, does this go to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen? It does not, does it?
No, sir, it does not.
But it would if you updated an offer on the land.
Correct. Mr. Grimes, I think the applicant would like to speak.
All right, yes, sir. Mr. Howard?
Yes, I, I would just like to say that I'm open for any, uh, to work with you any way I can. And, uh, whatever we need to do, I'm, I'm open to work with, maybe changing the plan or, or whatever. What, uh, or selling the land or whatever you'd like to do. And I'm, I'm very open.
Understanding. I know you have questions for Mr. St. John as well. So this, this gives us a chance to you get that straightened out with him as well.
Look, I'd like to make a comment to Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard, just right now, I want to thank you for all the development that you've done in Telomar. You've put an awful lot of property on the property tax rolls in Telomar, so you're a major contributor to the economy of Telomar. So I appreciate your openness to continuing to work with us on that.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
We visit this in thirty days. So with that, uh, our next, yes.
You said a vote of six to two. I show five to two.
Five to, I'm sorry, I can't do math.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Good thing I'm not a banker. So with that, um, we don't have any sub plans, uh, any other new business. Um, I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Mary. She's got a couple of things she wants to talk about before we adjourn.
Uh, thank you very much, sir. Um, as, as most of you know, the planning commission members are all required to do annual training. Um, unfortunately, that training did not occur in twenty twenty, so I'd like to go ahead and set that up for twenty twenty-one to get that required training done. Um, if I may, um, so it's not within this public forum, I will email each of you the instructions on how to register online through the MTAS website to do the required four hours of annual training. Um, I have elected to, because of COVID restrictions, you will do four hours of online training as well as an online presentation. So there will be no in-person training. I'd like to go ahead and bang this training out for twenty twenty-one so we get it done, so we don't run the risk of, of defaulting again. So I will provide those comments to you tomorrow, um, morning along with my, um, just to make sure all of you have my email. And I also have a, um, departmental, um, phone, so I'll issue you all my cell phone number as I am your staff, so you can feel free to call me um, at any time regarding the planning commission issues. Um, moving on, do you have any questions about that? No. Okay, moving on, recommended, uh, text amendment for discussion. So, um, as you know, I started here in Telomar at the very last week of November. Um, when I began working here, um, the first week or first two weeks, I spent reading the entire zoning ordinance as well as the entire subdivision control ordinance. Um, through reading through all of them, one issue came up that was kind of a red flag to me that caused me, um, a certain amount of legal concern. Um, that is within your provision of section eight oh four for non-conforming lots of record. Um, as your code reads, and I believe that the, um, code for this subsection was amended back in twenty eighteen, as it reads now, and I'm paraphrasing, if a legally established, non-conforming lot of record and not conforming lot of record in layman's terms, neither, it's either too small under the current zoning district or it's too narrow or both, and it doesn't meet current zoning standards, that a property owner cannot develop that for any purpose. If that lot is less than, um, say, one of the three criteria is less than six thousand square feet. So a given property owner could have a lot that's less than six thousand square feet and it's considered a non-conforming lot. The lot was legally created, that applicant cannot develop anything on that property. Um, it's my professional opinion that that is overreaching of zoning regulations and that should be, um, rectified sooner than later. Um, so I wanted to, I'm not of the professional opinion to, um, bring text amendments before the planning commission without the planning commission's direction. You, you're kind of running, driving the ship in this instance. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and then get your thoughts on it. And then if you wanted to proceed with, um, analyzing that code section and possibly bringing some, um, revisions to you, I'd be more than happy to do this. Also, I will note, I did review this, um, situation with the city attorney as well. He was on the phone earlier, I believe that he said he might have had to leave early. But I did review this with Mr. Washam as well.
Anything to agree with you as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean.
So as far as direction, um, it would be looking to you to say, yes, Mary, proceed with researching this and bring this at your earliest convenience with potential drafts of the, um, of a revision to this code section or that we can leave the code section as is.
I'm gonna just kind of do a quick spot vote on here real quick. Um, Ms. Blackwell?
Yes, come to us with revisions.
Mr. Sandlin? I think he said yes.
I, I read his lips, he said yes.
Now, Mr. Schwer?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Comer? Yes, for me.
Mr. Comer, you're still muted, sir? There you go.
Mayor Knowles?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And yes, for me. I think you are ready to go there. Yeah, good cast, Mary.
And that's it? That's all I had? Thank you.
All right. Any other business? If not, then I am going, our next meeting will be Monday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And I will adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.